I'm going to call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Donahue.
Here.
McKnight.
Here.
Roella.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Sterns.
Here.
Please stand if you're able to, to pledge allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a cellphone or iPhone or iPad, if you would use it, I'd appreciate it. If you hear mine, you're going to want to lock them up. Sure, where's that? Thank you. We have two individuals signed up. Dr. Dixon, you're first on the agenda.
Thank you. To Mayor Leroy Sterns, Deputy Mayor Larry McKnight, council members and city officials, again and again, Meadville Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship Board and Crawford Central School District, thank you for making the time capsule happen. We are most grateful for the leadership of Mr. Chris Sealy and Dr. Nancy Smith who co-chair the project and for the many city and county collaborators. Tonight, it is my pleasure on behalf of the Scholarship Board to present to the city of Meadville our time capsule lockbox. It's over there on the table. To be unearthed Wednesday, October 13, 2071, are seen fit by Meadville City Council. First though, Mayor Sterns, we want to thank you for your years of dedication and outstanding service to the city of Meadville. Your knowledge, care, and enthusiasm rubbed off on us. Enjoy your years ahead as we cling to memories of the many things you have done to keep Meadville a great city, and we are motivated to do likewise. Thank you. Looking at the lockbox, this is what it includes. It includes suggestions for announcing the unearthing of the capsule, like contacting the 71 second grade students from first district school who attended the burial, and 21 pre-kindergarten and preschool students from YMCA daycare who attended the burial, instructions from Mr. Zabzula, if I pronounced his name correctly, Director of Public Works as to how to remove the vault, greetings from Governor Tom Wolf, the proclamation from Mayor H. Leroy Sterns, a copy of the dedication program, a copy of our time capsule contents, the catalog of all contributions, list of our time capsule committee numbers, scientific information about our time capsule, and a photo book covering the time capsule burial. Here are the keys, Mayor Sterns.
I'm sure I won't be here to open it.
Well.
So I'm going to give this to our trusted city.
I will.
Okay.
You guys will be here to do it.
In conclusion, we are most appreciative for the city of Meadville and Crawford County. Your responses said in spirit and in action. What a grand place this is, what a grand community. Happy holidays.
Before you leave, Dr. Dixon, we want to thank you for all the time and effort that you put into the Martin Luther King, the Martin Luther King, the dinners, the scholarships, all the things that you've done. When I first met you, you had a reading program out at the county jail, and you asked me to come out and assist with you. So you've done an awful lot for the city of Meadville and for the community and for the county, so thank you so much. Peter, you'd like to go ahead?
Thank you once again. My name is Peter Roella. I reside at 374 Pine Street, and today I wish to address the budget. I know I've come too late for any of it. Before I begin, let me say once again, I'm speaking only for myself as a resident, taxpayer, and constituent, and a very, very anxious person, and not in any way for my employer or any other of my colleagues in the county. So today, I've been prepared with a little bit more than some sloppy arithmetic on the backup of some napkins. Over my Thanksgiving weekend, and not to, well, not today, by the time I read this, I read the 2022 budget, the approved 2021 budget, and the relevant sections of the American Rescue Plan Act, among other things, and I am worried about the city's use of ARPA funds based on these documents. So I can read from the American Rescue Plan Act directly in Section 603(c) that outlines allowable uses of ARPA funds by municipalities. A, to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or A to impacted industries. B, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay. C, for the provision of government services, emphasis mine, to the extent of the reduction of revenue of such metropolitan city nonentitled unit of local government or county due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year. D, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The proposed 2022 Meadville budget appears to assign ARPA funds to none of that. I found several, not very many citations of ARPA in the proposed budget, and I find that it's not explained dollar by dollar what allocation of ARPA funds are being spent on any of those purposes. I see ARPA funds cited on page 23, that the city will use monies from 2021 to balance 2022 budget. Another one, an amount that includes an ARPA allocation listed as general expenses on page 26, which I have citing a 1,165.89% increase in general expenditures, which I assume has rolled in the $662,000 of the ARPA budget to it, and nowhere else do I seem to find where ARPA monies have been assigned to what the initial summary says was essential services costs, which is not a phrase I can find in the American Rescue Plan Act. I read the 2022 budget, 2021, 2019, 2020. I can't find any mentionable net loss of revenue, and due to COVID specifically, that's it. I know that the federal government has some weird formula where there's an expected net loss of revenue based on what you would have made had COVID not happened, which is a technicality that never applied to Meadville in the first place. Like I said last time when I was here, this is money that we didn't earn and we don't deserve, and is being used in ways that I cannot find have been justified, and this makes me nervous for the following reason. American Rescue Plan Act, Section 603d, requires that the city provide, quote, "a detailed accounting of the uses of such funds." This is not shown within this budget or anything else that's been offered to the public so far. I've read every of the minutes in public statements since last April. There's been $80,000 to Zill Park, some, I think I calculated $33,900 deduction, uh, deduction of wage tax revenue, but I don't read that council has committed to the specific allocation of ARPA funds to any specific projects or payments at all that qualify under the act. Instead, I read four or five instances where it's all a lump to the general fund. ARPA Section 603e is important enough to read involved. I will. Recoupment. Any metropolitan city, nonentitled unit of local government or county that has failed to comply with subsection e outlining the appropriate use of funds shall be required to repay the Secretary of the U.S. Treasury, an amount equal to the amount of funds used in violation of such subsection. I mentioned I am a nervous person, and I am just a guy from 374 Pine Street who's a bit of a dork and had nothing better to do than this over my Thanksgiving weekend. Since 2020, we have been told that the city should expect a $1 million deficit by 2024, and it worries me that there is any risk at all that the city is taking to also have to repay perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars that you've already committed to spending in 2022, and we'll see what new council says in 2023, back to the federal government at the same time. I would, I know there are things that I don't get, that I don't understand. Everything here is just something that I can find on the website, Google search, or, you know, but I would like an explanation from council where the money is actually going as a form of a guarantee that the city will never have to pay, repay any of this money. If it's going to fill the budget for the next two years, we can have at the end of those two years, the U.S. Treasury knocking on the door and saying, "What do you do with that? Can we have hundreds of thousands of dollars back?" That would be a problem. What is ARPA buying? Whose salary is being paid for it? Why were those expenses chosen? How is it in any way related to the public health resiliency and COVID relief purposes of the law? How might these expenditures actually improve Meadville and possibly contribute to reducing that future million-dollar deficit? And perhaps most importantly, how is it absolutely safe committing to spend 662,000 ARPA funds now as general fund expenses to fill the deficit for next year? Because as an anxious person without question, answers to these questions, I feel insecure about Meadville's future, and I expect that others should feel so too. Sorry that I have to come back in and frankly be a little bit of a killjoy after the optimism for the future that we just here, but that's just me. That's just what I see while I'm reading the arithmetic. I would really appreciate having that anxiety dissuaged. It might be this council's decision, but the accounting will be next council's problem in the council of 2023, in the council of 2024, and the people of 2023, and the people of 2024, and hopefully Meadville will have a financial future by 2025.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Katie, notice, a notice of the executive meetings.
Your Honor, no executive session has been held since last meeting.
Motion to approve December's first regular meeting.
Motion.
Second?
All second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Energy report, area.
Thank you, Your Honor. So just two items. First is the reorganizational meeting date and time. So this will be the final meeting of this current council. Statutorily, it must be held the first Monday of the New Year, so that puts it at January 3. Typically, council has elected to have this at 10:00 a.m. on the 3rd, so if that is fine with this council, we would continue that, that pattern of doing so. So again, this will be the last meeting of this council. This will be the first meeting of the new council, followed by the Board of Health meeting. So it's 10:00 a.m. on January 3.
Works.
Works.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
And then the second item is just a reminder that this coming Saturday, December 18th, Santa Claus will be coming around town on the fire truck. Map is posted on the city's Facebook page as well as the city website, followed, that starts at noon. At 3:00 p.m., Santa will be doing a meet and greet at 231 Chestnut Street, the Crawford County Professional Building. Photos with Santa are available. Those are $5 per photo, or a donation to Toys for Tots. All proceeds, both in toys and monies, will be going to Toys for Tots. And I wanted to thank the union, the firefighter union, the International Association of Firefighters, Local 515, for helping the city with this event.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Thank you so much. Council's priorities for 2021. Anybody have anything to offer in three categories? Then we're going to go ahead and move down. Council members, subcommittee reports. Does anybody have anything to report on under the subcommittee? Old business, authority boards, and commission?
Your Honor, there is a recommendation here to appoint to the two vacancies in the Market Authority. I will also note that a communication was received from Devin Stout and Paula Burley, both who sat on the Market Authority interview committee, expressing some concerns about how those interviews were conducted. That communication has been circulated for council, but it was received after the cutoff to be on the agenda. Once the two vacancies on the Market Authority are filled, there will be no current vacancies on any city board, authority, or commission.
And we have both of those to see.
Correct.
Someone would like to make a motion to make the appointment?
A motion.
If we can do them jointly?
Yes. They would be for Patricia Conchi, who would be appointed for a term ending January 1, 2024, and Marissa Hartless, who would be appointed for a term ending January 1, 2027.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Thank you, Katie. We also have an ordinance, third and final reading, adopting the 2022 budget.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meadville for the year of 2022, including the general fund, debt and capital funds, liquid fuels program fund, stormwater management program fund, parking fund, real estate management funds, and special revenue funds, appropriating specific funds estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs, and funds of the city of Meadville for 2022, and establishing authorized maximum personnel complements for certain departments of the city of Meadville for 2022.
Motion, please.
Also move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, there's no changes from the first and second reading. As a reminder, the budget will be balanced using $662,000 in American Rescue Plan funds and a one-time transfer from the rate stabilization fund in the amount of $130,757.
Any questions from area? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution, living taxes for 2022, Katie?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville levying the following taxes and fixing the rates of taxation for the year of 2022, resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas the council of the city of Meadville passed on third and final reading ordinance number 3794, 2021, adopting the 2022 budget for the city of Meadville on December 15, 2021, and whereas that a tax be and the same is hereby levied upon all real and personal property within the city of Meadville subject to taxation for city purposes for the calendar year of 2022 as follows. General revenue, a tax for general revenue purposes in the sum of 9.71 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation. B, debt retirement, a tax for debt retirement purposes in the sum of 11.33 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation. C, capital improvements, a tax for capital improvements in the sum of 0 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation. D, recreation and parks, a tax to maintain, operate, and finance recreation and parks in the sum of 1.63 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation. E, shade trees, a tax to prune, feed, maintain, plant, and remove shade trees throughout the city of Meadville in the sum of .25 mils on each dollar of real estate valuation. Whereas the total of all purposes being 22.92 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, if and to the extent that any tax separately stated above exceeds the authority of the city to levy or to separately state any such item, any such separately stated tax or any access of any such separately stated tax shall be, shall be deemed to be and hereby is levied as a tax for general revenue purposes and shall be added to and included in the tax here and above stated as a tax levy for general revenue purposes. And whereas that a residence tax for general revenue purposes of the city of Meadville be and the same is hereby levied on all inhabitants of the city of the age of 18 years and over in the sum of $5. And whereas all taxpayers subject to the payment of taxes assessed pursuant to the terms of this resolution shall be entitled to a discount of 2% from the amount of such tax upon making payment of the whole amount thereof within two months after the date of the tax notice issued pursuant to law. All taxpayers who shall fail to make payment of any such taxes charged against them for four months after the date of said tax notice shall be charged a penalty of 10%, which penalty shall be added to the taxes by the tax collector and shall be collected by them. And whereas should any section, part of any section, levy, part, or provision of this resolution be declared by appropriate authority to be unlawful or unconstitutional, all other terms, conditions, levies, provisions, and parts herein shall continue in full force and effect as if the matter declared to be unlawful or unconstitutional has been omitted as of the date of the final enactment hereof. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that these tax rates shall be, shall take effect on January 1, 2022, and be it further resolved that all prior ordinance and parts of ordinances or any resolution or part of resolution inconsistent here with her, hereby repealed.
You get a star for reading that so well. Motion, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, area.
There's no change from the taxing rates in 2021. Total mileage will remain at 22.92 mils.
Any questions, comments from council? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Katie, we have a resolution setting the 2022 stormwater breaking fees?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville setting user fees to support the stormwater management system for calendar year 2022, resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas ordinance number 3707 of 2012, an ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, established a user fee to support the stormwater management system, was passed and enacted on October 3, 2012. And whereas the ordinance designates and defines equivalent residential unit, ERU, as the measure of impervious ground cover for a typical single-family detached residential property, used in assessing the fees for each parcel of the developed property, and what has been determined to be 2,660 square feet. And whereas pursuant to Section 5 of the ordinance, the charge per ERU was set at $90 per program year from November 1, 2012 through December 31, 2015, and each January 1 thereafter, the charge per ERU is to be adjusted annually as determined by the council of the city of Meadville. And whereas the council of the city of Meadville has determined that the new fee beginning January 1, 2022, will remain the same, $90 per ERU for the calendar year 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the user fee to support the stormwater management system for the calendar year 2022 shall remain at the current fee of $90 per ERU effective January 1, 2022, as described in Section 5 of ordinance number 3707, 2012.
Thank you, Katie. Motion, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, area.
The only thing, just same with taxes, everything remains the same as in 2021, $90 per ERU.
Any questions or comments from council? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye, please. Katie, we have a resolution adopting 2022 fee schedule, please.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville, adopting an updated fee schedule effective January 1, 2022, resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the city council does hereby adopt, update, and impose the following attached fee schedule with the approval of the city manager, in addition to any other fees adopted and imposed by any other motion, resolution, or ordinance of the council of the city of Meadville.
Motion, please. Motion, second?
All second.
Discussion, area.
So including your packet, you have the updated fee schedule that will appear on the website, as well as a fee schedule comparison. It just should be noted that these changes were made to better reflect the staff's time that's put into these items, as well as to be in better line with the consumer index pricing and to reflect services department currently provides. So for example, the medical oxygen bottle refills at the fire department charges for, we hadn't had those on the fee schedule in the past. So, but there are no substantial increases in pricing.
And you call it your questions from council?
Are we going to look again later on this year at the fee schedule for false alarms from the fire department?
We can do that.
There, there were some changes that are new, right? There are fees, there are fees on here that are proposed. Like, I think the city engineer structural assessment was a new, was an addition.
Correct, yeah.
And I'm wondering, like, how often we see that happen, how much that typically is, because I think it was actual cost plus 10%, and so how much we can expect, and like, if that's something that we would expect the homeowner to pay, or if that's something insurance would typically pay out?
I guess it really depends on the circumstances. It happens a couple times a year. The most recent, there was an accident on Spring Street where a car hit a house. Actually, had to be called out, and we always foot the bill for that. So we call the engineer in to look at it and say, hey, is this, can this be repaired? Should this be demolished? It's an imminent danger. We always have to eat those costs, so this is an opportunity for us to recoup that, potentially from the person who caused the accident. You know, we'd have to look into that specifically, but I think it really depends on the circumstances, on who exactly we pay for that.
And how much we would anticipate is going to depend on the circumstance, too.
Correct.
The commercial fire inspections was new, too, I think?
That one was not new. It just, there hadn't been a fee schedule, comprehensive fee schedule update in some time. That was adopted as part of an updated ordinance from 2018, I believe, and it just had not been included on that comprehensive fee schedule document. It's new since 2016.
Oh, and who pays the after hour council chamber use fee? Like, do people pay that right now? Like, what's the expectation there?
We, since I've been here, we've not had anybody rent the council chambers after hours, but we, we did have a discussion about eliminating that and thought we still wanted to keep it available for the community's use. We just wanted to make sure that the fee was comparable, because it would require staff time to stay and monitor the building.
Any other questions from council? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Katie, motion, discussion. Sorry, on accepting liquid fluid audit?
That's more of a Tim.
Tim?
Actually, was a good positive audit. There was no question cost or anything, and also it was nice that the gentleman from the audit gentleman called us, told us and asked if he could come in early. He had some time available, so he's actually a lot earlier than he usually would have done this audit, so it was kind of nice that staff was available right away for him to complete it.
Great. Motion to accept the audit?
Motion.
Second?
All second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Sterns.
Aye. Katie, we have a resolution ratifying submission?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville ratifying submission of an application for the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the action taken by city staff to submit a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, in the amount of $596,118, is hereby ratified, and said action is hereby approved and adopted as and for a binding and effective action of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
All second.
Discussion, area.
Council is familiar with this particular grant. The city submits almost every year for this grant. To date, we really haven't been successful with it, at least in the past five years or so. We have had the International Association of Um, we have had the International Association of Firefighters in, at the federal level review the grant this year, um, to get their opinion and make the adjustments. Uh, so this was submitted to FEMA. Um, application deadline was actually, is actually the seventeenth, but they always encourage applications to be submitted a week prior to that.
Any questions or comments?
In a sense then that it is a competitive grant, we haven't gotten the last figures.
That's correct, yes.
And this, has this, um, did this show up in the budget? Are we budgeting to replace the funds right now, or is that included in our capital borrowing?
It, it's not included in either.
Nothing.
Um, and, and this is a, if we get this, great, if not, we'll try again next year.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Katie, we have a residential authorizing signatures to amend agreement, the Ark and Market Street Green Space, Katie?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on an amendment to the easement agreement between the city of Meadville and Ark of Crawford County for the Market Street Green Space Project. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion please.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Mary Ann.
I'll turn this over to Gary.
Okay. Um, this stems from the, the Ark of Crawford County purchased the previous, the old Meadville Club Building on Market Street. They demolished it, want to basically create a, uh, community space and events and entertainment space essentially. Um, as part of that, they're seeking funding, they sought funding through the state, um, to fund half from the Department of Conservation Natural Resources. Um, they can't apply for that grant, the city has to apply for it, so as part of the arrangement, uh, basically they gave the city, it's, I'm sorry, let me back up. The city can, is the only one that can apply for it, but to apply for it, we have to have control for twenty-five years. The easement agreement gives the city control of the property for the grant purposes. The next operate, the next, uh, item on the agenda is the operation and maintenance agreement, which then turns over responsibility for maintenance and operation of that area back to the Ark. Even though they're under the property, it's a convoluted way, we had to go around to get the grant in order to, to do this. What this, today, the amendment before us today, originally the plan was to have on, onsite accessible parking, they're required to provide one handicap accessible parking space. Um, it will not fit on, on the space, um, easily, and so what this does basically is to add a sixteen by twenty-three foot, uh, section of the land immediately to the south, the parking lot immediately to the south is owned by the Ark. So basically carve out a section of that parking lot and, um, crap, uh, put it into the site plan for the purposes of the grant. So this basically takes a sixteen by twenty-three foot section out of that parking lot, adds it to the Ark green space area for the purposes of the grant, so that we can then move forward with designing the space there as opposed to in the lot proper. So, I hope that answers the question.
I follow.
Okay.
Any questions from council?
There are no implications on the kind of working agreements we've got or understanding.
Everything else stays the same, responsibility stays the same.
Square footage of, yeah.
Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Katie, we have a resolution authorizing signature for operation management agreement?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on an amendment to the operations and management agreement between the city of Meadville and Ark of Crawford County for the Market Street Green Space Project. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion please.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, this is off of what Gary's explanation of the previous agenda item was.
This is the agreement that turns the responsibility back over to the Ark.
Any questions from council? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Katie, we have a resolution for authorizing signatures web service?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on web services sales agreement between the city of Meadville and Revise. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as and for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion please.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Katie, there, I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
Uh, so if the council recalls, the city received a grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development as part of the stamp program to redesign the city's website. Um, after internal review and discussion, staff recommends going with Revise, um, and switching from our current provider. Um, the belief is that Revise can help with a number of different, um, improvements on the website, and they also are doing some data testing on different options that we could be a part of, that would help enhance the services provided to the city. Um, originally Revise was out of the question for us because they came in about twenty thousand dollars higher than the other bids, but we were able to negotiate to just a few thousand dollars difference. Um, and DCD has approved, um, us changing, uh, the grant amount to cover this cost.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Our legal counsel has reviewed this contract.
That's correct.
Um, some of the features and integration seem really exciting, so I'm excited that we'll have those capabilities, um, and hopefully authorities can, like, use that too in, in the end. Um, there was some, like, language that I was, uh, there was just one piece that stood out, there was a, a term about, um, adding additional, uh, storage, uh, capacity, but in, but it, we have unlimited storage capacity is what the contract looked like, I don't know if that... We are, so we're limited on the number of pages we can upload to two thousand, um, so this would be if we had to add additional page capacity, um, but that would be like PDF documents and stuff uploaded. I do not anticipate hitting that threshold. Um, there are some abilities with this company to put, like, um, actual forms into the website, which would reduce the number of PDF pages that we would be uploading, so.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Before we go any further, I, I do, I wanted to say this under the management, manager's, uh, report. Um, I want to thank Rick Totten for coming in and helping so much, sorry, with the computer services that we've had and getting things back up. Tim, maybe you can elaborate a little bit more.
Yeah, in the transition between, uh, uh, transition from the other IT support one to the new one, uh, we were kind of in flux, and so we asked Rick Totten from Capola Enterprises to come in and help us, and he's been invaluable for the last two or three weeks. And so he's gonna continue to help for the next few weeks until, uh, the tech works gets up to speed. So I just, I did want to thank him for doing that.
Well, that's great, Hughes. And they, they did work for us for quite a few years.
They did, and it was under a different type of services contract than what we currently have, it was, uh, just for higher level type stuff, uh, IT services, where now it's, it's pretty much everything.
Well, I just want to make sure we thank him because that, that was a big help to us, and, uh, we appreciate that. Um, Katie, we have a resolution appointing a city clerk.
Yes. Okay. Uh, a resolution, the council of the city of Meadville appointing deputy city clerk Catherine Licker as city clerk for the city of Meadville effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas the council of the city of Meadville has the authority to appoint a city clerk pursuant to section one one oh one six point one of the third class city code. And whereas the city clerk is responsible for administering the records of council in the city, administer oaths and matters pertaining to the city and performing other duties as determined by the council of the city of Meadville and as set forth, set forth in the third class city code. And whereas the city manager currently serves as both the city manager and city clerk as permitted by the third class city code optional charter. And whereas the council of the city of Meadville desires to have deputy city clerk and right-to-know officer Catherine Licker serve in the capacity of city clerk effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the city manager concurs with council's desire to appoint Ms. Licker as city clerk. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville, hereby appoints Catherine Licker to fulfill the duties of the city of Meadville city clerk as set forth in the third class city code and determined by council of the city of Meadville effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. Be it further resolved that Ms. Licker shall hold such office of, shall hold such office an indefinite term until such time as a successor has been appointed.
Motion please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Katie, you want the job?
Yes.
You got a phenomenal job, so I, I'll be the first one to say yes for it.
Katie, minor change?
Yeah, I caught it. What am I saying again?
Not retroactive?
No, no.
So any discussion? Thank you for taking the position. Any one second, roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. And we have quite a few resolutions. Um, Katie, one, two, resolution, please.
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville recognizing dispatcher Mary Wayne upon her retirement. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas Mary Wayne has served as a valued employee of the city of Meadville for almost twenty-nine years, and whereas Ms. Wayne began working for the city of Meadville Police Department as a dispatcher on April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-three, and whereas Ms. Wayne has performed the duties of her office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and professionalism, and whereas Ms. Wayne has elected to retire from active employment with the city of Meadville effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that city of Meadville Police Department dispatcher Mary Wayne is hereby commended for her many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mary Wayne for every success in the future.
Motion please.
I move to accept with regret.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, just to thank Mary for her service over the years, um, she's a wonderful person and wish her much success and enjoy it in her retirement.
Any comments from council?
She was, she was great with PR for the department. A good public face.
Losing a lot of his knowledge about the city.
I had the opportunity to work with Mary for many, many years before she even became an elected official. Um, she always did her job, and she did it with class and style, and, uh, she knew, she knew the calls are coming, so I wish her the best retirement, and I'll be over about nine o'clock with pizza, so. Roll, any other comments? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Katie, we have a resolution, um, okay?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville recognizing Bennett Gould for his service. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas Bennett Gould has served as a valued employee of the city of Meadville for over four years, and whereas Mr. Gould started at the city as an intern while still in school at Allegheny College prior to being employed, and whereas Mr. Gould was hired as stormwater program support manager and began serving in that capacity on May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, and whereas Mr. Gould also took on the duties of GIS manager and IT coordinator throughout the course of his time at the city, and whereas Mr. Gould has performed the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and professionalism, and whereas Mr. Gould has elected to leave employment at the city of Meadville effective November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that city of Meadville, uh, stormwater support coordinator Bennett Gould is hereby commended for his years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Bennett Gould for every success in the future.
Motion please.
I'll turn.
Second.
I'll second.
Katie? All right. Mary Ann? We're only gonna skip a full minute.
Um, no, just to, to thank Bennett, uh, for his service, he has many individuals with the city, started out as one thing and quickly expanded and took on additional duties, um, and he did so very well, so I just thank him and wish him best of luck at his new position.
Thank you, council member.
Uh, I just, uh, I really wish Bennett the best, I, I loved how he could take on any job that needed taking on, I watched him do it many times, I'd see Andy hand off something new to Bennett, and he would take it on, so, good luck, I'm sure he'll be successful.
I want to wish Bennett great, uh, success in his new position, I think he'll do a phenomenal job, he did for the city. Um, you know, um, you, you, he seems to really want to enjoy what he's gonna be doing, so I, I wish him all the best. What else? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Resolution, Elle?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville recognizing council member Sean Donahue for his service. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas Sean Donahue was first elected to Meadville City Council to serve a four-year term beginning January sixth, two thousand fourteen, through January first, two thousand eighteen. And whereas council member Donahue was elected for a second four-year term which commenced on January first, two thousand eighteen, and will complete on January third, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas during his tenure, council member Donahue chaired the Board of Health, served as a representative to the French Creek Council of Governments on behalf of the city, and was appointed to numerous subcommittees. And whereas council member Donahue has worked diligently to keep the best interests of the citizens first and foremost, and performed the duties of his office with dedication and thoughtfulness. And whereas council member Donahue is hereby commended for his dedicated service to the city of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council on behalf of the city staff and citizens of Meadville extend to outgoing council member Sean Donahue their thanks and gratitude for his service and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Motion please.
Move to the law.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
Uh, just wanted to thank you for everything on behalf of the city staff and myself. Um, it has been a pleasure working with you, so I hope to see you around.
Well, I'll miss the Browns update.
Took that away from me.
But I, yeah, I just, um, wish you the best. I'm, uh, I know you're still busy at the Tool and Die, so, um, and I'll see you around.
Other?
Is this sweater Sean?
My mom made the sweater.
Really?
In high school.
I love it.
When I was in high school, I had it for 35 years.
Yeah, well, and more serious now, uh, Sean, your fixture, uh, that you're slinging cotton candy, uh, also a market house there, uh, allowing a group of community members to garden on your property and the board is a big part of this community and it'll be good to have you. And yeah, I'll have to start reading the sports section or something.
I have some word to talk about later.
All, all of those comments to Leroy and Sean jointly. Um, it's been great working with you. We have gotten a lot accomplished as a council and that's because we overlooked political differences and we worked, all of us worked in the best interest of the city. That was a great relationship to have and the citizens benefit as a result. So I thank you for your service, both of you. Um, and I know you'll be in touch.
Sean, it's been great working with you, especially since last year we spent actually more times together as friends and not colleagues and found we have a quite a good in common. And it was great and I hope we can continue that. I wish you all the best. Anyone else? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa. Vogel. Sterns.
All right. Resolution, Em?
A resolution, the council of the city of Meadville recognizing Mayor Leroy Sterns for her service. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas H. Leroy Sterns served the city of Meadville for 24 dedicated years from 1998 to 2022. 18 years as a council member followed by six years as the city's mayor. And whereas Mayor Sterns' commitment to public service and selflessness evident through his, throughout his time at the city and his extensive volunteer work has been a great asset to all the citizens of the city during his tenure. And whereas Mayor Sterns never lost his unparalleled sense of humor, no matter what life had to throw at him, nor his kindness and generosity. And whereas Mayor Sterns, uh, always placed the best interests of the city before all else and worked diligently to make the city a safe and beautiful place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas Mayor Sterns has been a tireless believer in the city and its potential promoting civic and community pride as well as working diligently on the issues and challenges that face the city during his incredible 24 years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that city council on behalf of the city staff and the citizens of Meadville wish to honor Mayor Leroy Sterns for his 24 years of outstanding and dedicated service and offer a sincere thank you and best wishes in all of his future endeavors.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Wow. Fly.
So behalf, again, behalf of the, uh, the city staff and myself, just thank you for everything that you've done for the city, for the staff. I personally want to thank you for your support and guidance, especially in this position. Um, and I'm sure that I will be in touch with you on many other things in the future.
Thank you.
Well, Leroy, I've known you since a long time, elementary school and, uh...
I didn't say diapers. I think I would be heading back to that if it was childhood disease.
Yeah. So, uh, it's, it's been interesting working with you. I've learned a lot from you. Um, it's going to be sad not having you here, but it's, you, you've got plans, you've got that new camper and you said you want to travel, so I'm actually envious of you. You need someone to drive or something. Vacation's coming up.
I didn't make that much money as the mayor. I'm cheaper than mine.
I, I wish you the best and I really hope you enjoy yourself.
Uh, Leroy, I just, uh, I've really enjoyed our friendship. This has been a lot of fun. I can't imagine you were here 24 years and eight years has been a long time. Uh, I, I like, I appreciate your mentorship. So, I mean, it's been a, a real learning experience and, uh, I've watched you become a really good mayor. So, I mean, it's something that I, it's been overlooked, but I mean, people don't realize the pandemic was a huge thing. You were the mayor through the pandemic, or most of it, so. But, uh, I really appreciate all the time you put in. And I hope you understand how much you've done for the city because you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
I second that you've done a lot. Um, you know, lots of ways the reason I'm, I'm here. You believe in me and remember, uh, in the downtown mall, you presented during the year of Meadville, the aerial shot that you took, I believe, of, uh, of downtown Meadville. And shortly after that, I came to work for RDA and, um, uh, fell in love with this place because of that opportunity, I think, that you gave me. And, um, yeah, I think you do a lot of people, uh, and then a lot about Meadville. And thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
I like tell stories, historical ones, uh, but just to show how things change. 24 years ago, Leroy and I were, um, rivals, if you were, uh, competing against each other. And we still don't remember if it was eight or nine votes difference.
Nine. I'm going to go with nine. Trust me, he would sweat it out.
But we've gone from being political rivals to good friends and we've had a great working relationship with each other. I know I'll see you and your recipes on Facebook. If I used all those recipes, I'd be back to 400 pounds. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
I, I would just like to say on behalf of Shaver Law Firm, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with both of you and, um, the city owes you both a great debt of gratitude for all your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leroy, if I may?
Absolutely.
I was fortunate enough to be here in 1998 when you were first elected and, uh, served with you for quite a few years and over those years, all the dedication you've had to the citizens and all the hard work you put in. But one of the things, uh, being on volunteer board, especially the Crawford County Humane Society with you, I found out that you are actually a jack of all trades. You've amazed me of all the things you can actually do. And so that's one thing that's stuck with me all these years. And so obviously we'll still serve together on that board for many more years, hopefully.
We will. I have to share with you. I rented a Bobcat and a backhoe for the Humane Society. Now, of course, I want to get board approval, so I called Jim. Jim says, oh my God, I've got to come over and see you do this. And I said, well, let, let me get it off the trailer first. And, uh, we had a lot of fun that day.
Pretty amazing what you can do. I'm impressed.
He pulls with this. Thank you. It's hard, so bear with me. I love the math so you can't see everything, but you know, it's hard to thank everybody because there's so many. Um, when, when I look around, I want to thank the voters of the city of Meadville. You believed, you believed in us. And I think that's important. You know, it's, it's tough to run a city, but I'll tell you what, the heartbeat of the city is in this room, our staff members. You guys are the one that makes the city what it is. And you put a lot of time in, a lot of love and care, and a lot of dedication. So you make us look good. And I say we because it's not one, it's all of us. I did ask two people, actually three people to be here this evening. And one is Joe Gallo. Joe is the ex, uh, successor of the county courthouse, but he's more than that. Joe has ran my campaign for 24 years, for at least six terms. And, uh, those gray hairs, they're mine. Um, he's done a phenomenal job and when he knows the numbers of what you won by, it's, it's true. And I can't thank you enough. You're a great concierge, you, you've been my support and I appreciate everything you've done. As with Chris Sealy, Chris was my treasurer and, uh, Chris did a phenomenal job. I couldn't pick anybody better than a county auditor to make sure that my finances are always in, in top-notch shape. So I want to thank Chris, he couldn't be here this evening, but I had a discussion with him this afternoon. I, I really appreciate that. And Joe, brother, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Dixon, I think I've had more fun working with you than anyone I've ever had. You, uh, you brought a lot of class and style, you taught me some things. Um, well, actually you taught me many things and I can't thank you enough for what you've done, especially for the city for so long. And I also, sorry. It's really hard to do this because there are so many people and you don't want to leave anyone out that, that has touched my life and, and done so much for the city. So if I miss you, please know from the heart, thank you. But, you know, everybody, um, sometimes have mentors and you're very lucky if you have one mentor. I was blessed with two. Uh, Mayor Richard Friedberg, um, was a big help to me when I first got on the council. Mayor, oh, I always sat to the side, Richard sat where, there he is. And if Richard thought I was getting out of hand or was going to ask something really stupid, um, he would take his left foot and he would kick me in the side of my right ankle. Uh, I have a permanent indentation on my ankle. I, I thought about getting a tattoo, Friedberg, but they couldn't spell the name. So anyway, um, Richard was a phenomenal mayor. He had the numbers and, um, he really truly cared about the city, so I appreciate him being there for me and all the guidance that he gave me. But as I said, I have two mentors and the other one I asked to be here this evening is Commissioner Chris Self, um, former mayor. When Chris decided to run for commissioner, he came to me and said, do you think you can handle being mayor? And I said, oh my God, if I don't swear, I'd be really lucky. I try not to do that. And, uh, I don't know if I could ever fill the shoes that I had. And he told me that he would be there, um, for anything I needed. And, uh, he, he kept up. And it's hard not to get emotional because when you have that many people care, pretty like, thank you, Chris. Love you, brother. So with the staff, thanks. Um, the Kleenex really wasn't for tears, though I have them just in case. Uh, if you know me, I, I, I am a soft-hearted person and I really truly cared about the city. I still do. And it's in good hands. And, uh, I wish you all the luck in the world. Um, you, you're going to be phenomenal. Um, I do want to say that, um, I had the opportunity to work with two other, I call three other managers. And, um, I'd be really upset if I don't remember Joe Chris and all the time and effort that Joe put into the city of Meadville. Um, we have stayed very close friends. Um, he has a camper also, so maybe we can, uh, gather up to go somewhere. And, uh, and Andy Walker, um, Andy's phenomenal. He, uh, he is just, I remember the first day that Andy walked into the chamber and he stood there and I thought, wow, he's really tall. And I looked over at Richard and I said, he's going to be good for the city. And Richard said, you haven't even met him yet. And I said, just got that feeling. And Andy has done a phenomenal job, not only for the city, but for the college, uh, all the organizations that he belongs to. Um, he gives a lot, he, he gives his whole being to what he believes in. And, uh, and he's a great speechwriter. Um, when I was in France with the help of Christopher and Andy, you got me through some really, really big things. I'm not the type of person that likes to be in a large group of people. I like to be back in the corner and let everybody else do what they need to do. But when I went to France, um, to represent the city, uh, our sister city in Fim, um, I was scared. Oh man, I was scared. And on the flight over, I got to tell you, Christopher, you, you were a great help to me. And there were so many people there to help because I didn't know one word of French. And my dear friend back there said, hey, we'll teach you how to speak French. Well, I destroy the English language, so I'm not about to ruin the relationship between the States and France. But those are just some of the things that you, you've done that, uh, I appreciate. And we had a great time. And one other thing I want to say is, um, this, the, the past staff that's been here that are now retired and enjoying themselves and, um, and all the work that they have done. Um, we don't ever want to forget your past because they helped set the future. And, uh, and, uh, you know, when you sit behind this desk as a group, you work together. And Jim, you are absolutely right. When you take that oath of office, it doesn't matter what party you belong to. You're there to make the city a better place for everyone. And I can tell you that if all the council members that I've sat with, that was always respected behind this desk. And, and that, that's a big thing. I, I can't bench it every council member because there's been so many, but they all given, um, uh, Nancy Angela Bittner, um, was great to work with, uh, Bob Langley, um, Don Gill. There's so many out there and I hate to start naming names because I know I'll forget somebody. And there are some that are no longer with us that put their time in, which Caseby was a good guy. He, he, uh, really worked for the city too and, uh, that was important. And current council, Sean, it's been great. I mean, really, our friendship's going to go forever. Oh, and am I going to tell you? I was just looking at all my pictures going back through. My grandson wanted me to put all the pictures together of the history that I've been with the city. And I've been working on it for about four weeks and I ran across that picture, you and I standing by each other. Um, I was presenting with, uh, the picture of the city. And very proud of you, you, you did a lot. Supported you. We didn't always agree, but that's what makes the world go around and that's what makes changes, so really appreciate working with you. You. I get to work with them almost every day. Thank you. Your friendship means a lot to me. The care that you have for the city has been phenomenal.
Thank you.
Jim, you're exactly right. I remember 24 years ago, I was thinking, oh, this guy's going to beat me. And, uh, but our friendship has really grown strong and, uh, love you as a friend and I will always be there to help.
Appreciate it.
So with that, um, council member's statement, Sean, or I'll, I'll wait for Sean. Jim?
Thank you.
Man, we just need a roll call on the resolution.
Oh yeah, I hate going this way. I plan on being in the south real quick. Motion? You got a motion, you got a second? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
No, absolutely, yes. It's not that I didn't enjoy it, but I've got some good plans to head. Jim, I'll serve as your council member's statement.
Appreciate it. Um, I'd like to take a moment to thank the community, uh, who have donated to various organizations to help those who are in need at Christmas times. Workers, volunteers, fundraisers, donors, uh, we appreciate everything that you have done. And as I said, the last meeting, that's what makes Meadville a great community in which to live. Meanwhile, Merry Christmas to everybody and have a Happy New Year.
I'd like to reiterate on Jim, also, there's, uh, are some churches and, uh, that are doing some meals for people. And if you know someone, you know, and if you have a big enough meal, invite someone over or take them a plate. There's a lot of single people or elderly people that don't have any one, so, you know, keep them in your mind. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'll see you before you leave.
What?
Yeah, I don't know, we're feeling warm. I'm going to be a killjoy, uh, and just, you know, like, I, I'm, I'm really sharing Peter's anxiety, right? I think, Peter, you articulated them well. Um, you know, I, I voted against the, the budget for 2022 and it, and against the, the tax schedule, uh, that, that we proposed, um, because I share those anxieties about the financial health of our city, uh, over the next few years and also about the use, as I've said many times, for American Rescue Plan Act funds. I think it's often, right, I, I think it's often perceived that I'm, I just like to talk to people or I just like to get input and like, while I think that there's value in that and I think that getting input from our residents is important, uh, I'll just underscore that it is a requirement for American Rescue Plan Act funds and that it also tells us what people need, right, in response to COVID, which is, um, which is what these funds are about. And so, uh, I'm, I'm glad you can walk away feeling good and warm and celebrated and go into good holidays. Um, but, uh, we've got, uh, those that'll be here, we've got work ahead, starting years ago, but starting in January. Um, and I'll go through my holidays anxious for the state of affairs for Meadville's financial, uh, future. That's it.
Sean?
Uh, I've got a bunch of things here. Just my last one. Uh, first of all, what's really important to me is Meadville's basketball team. I went to the game on Tuesday or yes, last night. And, uh, we are starting or playing a lot of freshmen, it's three or four freshmen, and they are lights out from the three-point line. I mean, if they're standing out there alone, they're pretty guaranteed. Now they're very, very young, very green team, but that's how you make a good team and I'm pretty excited about it. I don't know if we're going to win a lot of games this year, but it's still a lot of fun to watch. And, uh, Simmons is the, he was the good football player and now he's a very good basketball player and it's kind of fun to watch him develop as a ballplayer, but there's, it's all a young team. I mean, he's only a junior too. But that, that's my basketball talk, that was enough of that. And if you want to go to the game, I sit in the same seat I sat in when I was in high school on the left-hand side. I've never changed seats. I'm always sitting in the visitor's section. I guess there ain't that many visitors anymore, but, uh, I sit in the same place. People know where I sit because I've been there forever, for 30 years now, I think. Uh, eight years on council, I just, I was talking to Dr. Dixon, it was just yesterday that I was in her English class. It was eighty-five, eighty-four, so. And I think I was in favor, right? I'm not sure, but I, you know, hey, I'll take it. But it's just yesterday that I was in that class, my mom made this sweater, I saw it on The Cosby Show. So, I mean, that's where things come from back then, that she could, you could just point at something and she could make it for you. So it was kind of neat. But anyway, about eight years on council, I sat through six times, we had no tax increase. I was just thinking of all the things that have happened, because you think about it, I think, geez, that's a long time. I can't imagine Leroy's got twenty-four years worth of things to think about and I got eight. I think, it's now as I have before, I've always said this, I said it when I ran the first time. The city should not raise taxes while we have money in savings accounts. I just do not see why you take it out of someone else's savings account to put it in our own. So that's just, that's one of the things I've always pushed and we've taken advantage of it many times. We took advantage of it this year. Sandy's property was not developed when I got on, I was thinking about that and we've done that since I've been here. Sold the city building, rented it out and sold it while I was here. Numerous streets have been fixed. Highland was bad when I was a kid riding my bike and now it's nice. I said, "There's people that don't like it." Lord Street, I looked at a house on Lord Street when I was looking at houses and I said, "Why would I buy a house when the city doesn't care about your street on that street?" And now it's fixed. And I remember taking Andy and saying, "Andy, you have to do something with this street. These people are not going to want to live here." Bourbon Street was the same way. It's just three streets that I picked out, but I mean, this is, there was a lot of stuff's been done. I wasn't expecting them to fix all the alleys, but they did. And that'll last the rest of our lives. I mean, that's really, it's been a real benefit, you don't realize it, but I said, "The alleys were fixed in the last eight years." Tore down that parking garage down there by, behind Voodoo and replaced it. And that was a huge undertaking and I felt bad for Andy during it. And HP Way Park, tore it out, put in a new park. We oversaw that while I was here. And the water tanks, and they cleaned the water tanks this year, they look great. I'm going to have to tell you that, thank you. I drive by them four times a day at least, so. Tim Rack Lake and Rainbow Dam, we made sure Tim Rack Lake got refilled. Rainbow Dam is interesting to me because my Uncle George was the mayor in sixty and that's what his project was, was Rainbow Dam. So it's kind of interesting that I got to be part of it. It's fifty years later, you know, I got to be there again. So, I liked that, I thought that was great. The mayor, thanks for being my friend and my mentor. Jim, Chris Saw, I loved working with you. You taught me so much about everything and so have you. And John Metaglia, I really miss John, I don't run into him enough. I'd like to know when I saw him every other week. Andy Walker was great, Gary, you've been a lot of help with me, everything, I'll still call you. You know that I have your cell phone number, I'll track you down. And since we had the buzzkill over here, I would like to say, this is something that concerns me and the sky is not falling. Okay? I just beware of chicken little politics, okay? Things aren't as bad as they seem to be all the time. And if you have faith and you know that the city will get by, we will get by. You know, and there may be cuts and things are going to change, but it will happen. And it's just something that bothers me because I see it all the time. People ask me all the time, "Is it that bad?" And I go, "No, it's not that bad, we have a spending problem. We have collected a lot of money." And that's it. Thank you, Mayor Sterns, it's turning over to you.
Well, I thanked everybody, but there are a couple of other people on here that I'd forgotten I would like to thank. Rose Marie Grove, our comp controller, I worked with Rose Marie. She does a phenomenal job when it comes to counters checks, making sure everything is in order. She does a phenomenal job and it's been a pleasure working with her. And also with Michelle Sampson is our treasurer. These are the individuals that you don't hear much about because they're behind the scenes doing a lot of work. But I want to make sure we mention them. And Gary, I kind of missed you when I was talking about city manager. But Gary's and my friendship goes back before the city, or I think I was still on the city.
You had just come on.
I'd just come on. I was a humane officer and Gary did, I did a big raid up in Erie and Gary was there reporting for the Meadville Tribune, one of the best reporters, there are a number of them, but he was one of the best that worked with me all the time. And then he came to city council with a project and Mayor Friedberg was there and they wanted to build a skate park. And when they wanted to build the skate park, Richard, my dear friend, sat there and said, "It will never last. Don't waste..." It was one of the kicks that I got in the ankle. But it has survived and Gary was a big part of that. We raised the money, we built the park.
We went to five different communities and they all laughed us out of the room. You were the only one that listened.
I listened. It's still here. However, I did break a wrist with three pins and I will not be on the skateboard ever again. But Gary, I can't thank you enough, you've been phenomenal from the beginning, enjoyed working with you. Thank you for mentioning that skate park.
Thank you.
Christopher, love you, brother.
Love you too.
Thank you. With that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Yes. I'm going to throw it. See you guys.